I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic before which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start off with roll call. John Lesterj?
Here.
Bridgette Hayes here.
Here.
Dan Reinhaus?
Here.
Curtis Ward. We do have a forum. First on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting from September 18th. As amended, Regina? I apologize for getting those to you so late. I did make some changes that I amended a little last time, so if you haven't seen them, you have an opportunity. I got a copy, paper copy. Anybody have any additional amended changes to the regular meeting minutes? Could I get them?
I'm making a motion to approve.
John moves to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
I abstain.
Thank you. Earl's standing. Motion carried. Next is the approval of claims and payroll. So, claims. It is a total of $234,426.6. Could I get a motion to approve the claims as presented unless anybody has any questions?
I'm making a motion to approve.
John moves to approve the claims. Is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried. Next is the payroll. Payroll ending 23 September is $54,527.42. I mean, $54,488.94. I'm sorry, what did you say? I was just announcing the total claims. Is it $54,000 the number up top or is it the number you wrote in at the bottom? It's the number I wrote in, so it's the 54, 40, 94 plus the 30 and 48 next to it. So we're stuck here. This, the amount you wrote in is $54,527.42 for payroll. Yes. Let me make sure.
Tom, I should add it all two together, make it count.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Earl. It's $54,527.42. Yes. Okay, sorry. I just said, sorry. I'm sorry, I wasn't following my glasses. I was a little confused. Thank you, Gina. Is there a motion to approve the payroll?
I'm making a motion.
John moves to approve the payrolls, is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried. Okay, first is Crystal Rethenstein. From the Franklin County Girls' Softball Association.
Hi, everybody. So, in the past, a while or so, I had people come to me that would like to pay for a barricade down the girls' softball fields. It's something that I feel is truly into better, not just our racketing, but our softball teams, every single kid that likes to hit it all, their dad or mom must go down there and, you know, first of all, put them in the house and chase everything down. So, and Rocky and I already went down there for multiple places that our kids took us without being eyesore or cutting down any trees. And we found a good spot in between the 60 field, the newer field, the little field, and the 10 field. And there's a lot of trees kind of there, but Rocky measured it out so that way we could put it back there. It's going to be kind of hidden because of the trees and no trees will be taken down, although I do think there will have to be kind of some limbs, is that correct? So this is 100% no cost to the town or the league.
I appreciate your passion. I'm so glad that you are committed to this program. I think it's amazing. But my personal feeling is that I adore the park. It is a gem of this town and the more concrete and more steel we put, I think, takes away from the natural beauty, which is what is the draw for a lot of people, that it's so peaceful there. It's someplace we can get away from just noise and you just hear the trees and, you know, the water and everything. I am not for this, although I don't want to say that because I just, I just know you guys are doing an amazing job. I just don't want to take anything more away from the park than we've already taken. We're going to discuss another issue tonight with the disc golf that I feel is also taking away from the beauty of the park and I just don't want to add to that compounding problem. Just my opinion.
How do you feel about the location policy? Are you for this or against it?
I'm kind of original. I think we've got enough concrete buildings down there, but I think it's sort of a bit of a community. It's kind of new for me.
The location, are you for that or do you want to...
Yeah, the location is, it's kind of tucked back, like you said, in between, I'm not sure, I think you've got the ball field's number, but it's, I don't know.
I mean, they've got, well, a bad dorm. Yeah, and I try to highlight it over here, but it's hard to see.
So yeah, then this stuff behind, like, three...
He's looking into it, so it'd be between his heart and his hands.
Correct. How are you going to keep people from vandalizing?
Well, we do have security cameras up now that are not on Wi-Fi, actually, because we used to give notifications, but we're taking off of that. But we do have access to them. They do go back so far. We do currently have, I think we have not many cameras, but when they're pretty active, that we will be mounting things. And this could also, I mean, Rocky and I talked about it, someone recruiting back there, we didn't find any of those cameras. This could be a benefit of the town also, is that when we add our extra cameras, like, we can, we can find any of those people that do these things, so.
So does the town have access to those cameras?
Um, you guys don't have access to them, but like, all, Rocky, all we did was go in and look at stuff. So if any kind of thing happens, obviously, we would be happy to go through them.
Where's the server for the cameras?
There, it's inside the concession stand. There is, it's not on Wi-Fi, so it's just recorded and has to take over our system.
And did the last council approve those cameras or...
That was a bargain. I'm guessing so, because that was, we got those donated, but it didn't... I don't, I don't know. Those three were just being charged.
So you're going to add six more then or you already have nine up?
I'm sorry?
You said you have nine, are nine mounted?
No, we only have three, we have...
So you'd like to add six more?
We would like to be able to cover even like the bathrooms area, if possible. Just in the mix, because, I don't know, two years ago or three years ago, right before opening day for our softball day, we were down there until like 11 o'clock in the morning and everything ready. And then we came to the bathrooms being destroyed, people were about to deliver, to like, all the trees, like, just tore everything out, stack, table, tables. You know, we had a huge mess that we did put on first day and that was, I think that's kind of what triggered the, the camera system.
So you guys, you guys paid for all that?
No, absolutely not.
Like, I mean, isn't there like a monthly charge?
We don't have Wi-Fi.
Oh, it's only monthly, it's, okay, sorry, sorry, moved to that.
How large is the barricade?
I, I'm 100% on this. It's either 55 by 15 or 65 by 15.
How tall?
Um, probably 50 feet. So that's where, I don't think any branches directly would hinder anything, but I think it was more prevention that if, you know, a storm came through, that it wouldn't fall in.
Is there any way to incorporate the new parking lot thing that can improve the gravel without being displaceful or whatever?
Put the barricades in the parking lot?
Well, alongside and something like that. I mean, that could be in it, but...
There's no room, there's no place to play there. There's shelter that's right there. Being the door side going into the ball fields, that's all kind of unloved ground there, so that definitely wouldn't work for them. And then, you know, the south side, they have volleyball courts there. I don't think there's no room there for it.
I guess if it were put in, like, I'm not sure that that would be a good place for it, only because one of our biggest concerns is safety. And people that walk around out there are hateful, that they'd be too close to an end, and/or people would be parked too close to an end. That's one thing that we, we are concerned about. But am I allowed to ask questions? So I guess my biggest question is that if you like the serenity of the river and the peace and quiet, that is where the hell of the softball in that part. And we play there constantly, almost, almost all year round. So I don't see how putting a barricade in here would, wouldn't let a bat would hinder.
It's not necessarily the noise, it's just the barricades aren't very, doesn't have any aesthetic natural beauty. I mean, you, you agree?
I, yes and no. I guess because I love softball so much, that it's just a natural thing. I would expect to be there. And if we bring up four fields, I would expect to see a barricade to, to help our players move along and whatever.
Well, I mean, there's, there's a, there's a good group of people that are still trying to get used to the disc golf. They don't like that. And I know that you guys are doing the extension of the, of the building, which that's going to be another, oh my gosh, what are you doing to our park? And then this would just, just be adding, adding fuel to that fire. The people that just haven't really had time to get used to all the, the changes. It's kind of just another thing.
Is there where you can have any of these people? Because I would love to speak with them.
I mean, it's just random people that I see.
I'm just curious. What are you supposed to, add on to do something special? I don't understand that.
I, I'm personally for it. I've reported on sports most of my life and I think that the softball program has always been good for this town ever since the park was put in. Softball was incorporated in the park immediately. It was part of the plan immediately. And so, you know, where they got it, it's right in between ball fields. I don't see anything wrong with it. I think it's part of, part of what a park is supposed to be.
I don't think, I don't think anybody, because I was on the board when all that happened. It wasn't designed to be a baseball field, I can tell you. And it's grown, there's our safety, people parking all over. That's been there, then it's more displeasing than anything. I think it's just grown to the point of, it's just really misplaced in the fire.
Do you have any questions, comments?
I think it's beneficial for our kids. I mean, I think it's something that we should look into moving forward with.
So, I don't know if you've been following the town council meetings, but there are, we have this help program called the Hoosier Endurance Program, and part of that are four projects. One of those projects includes a sports complex next to the fire department where that old state rock lawn maintenance shed is, or building it is. So we, we've actually already paid for an engineer to do a drawing, a schematic of developing that into a mostly pickleball, but also other types of sports of restroom and shelter and developing that area of, you know, would you be interested in just talking to them and see if maybe you can take your idea and that funding to that project and just put it over there? Because that's where a bunch of concrete is going to go. It's going to be ugly, but it's going to be better than the old maintenance building.
No, I, I agree. I think it would be most beneficial down at the park because that's where all the teams are going to be. I mean, our real focus is on there. We have, it would be hard for coaches to run a team practice and, which, by the way, during the next season, we have roughly, I think we've had 22 or 23 teams times two during the week. So if they're going to be able to utilize that, they would have to leave that area to go up somewhere else and participate. I, I guess that my, my concern or maybe frustration even is that there's already, we already have four fields. I, I, for me, even if I was a softball fan, say it was like football with every field, with everything that's up there, you would expect to see soccer utilizing it. You would expect to see all these different programs utilizing as much as you can in that area. This is a small, I hate the concrete any of it, but it's already there. So I don't think that, especially because I think, I'm actually very old, because that's not the place that I was going to put them, but knowing that it's going to be hidden back there, it's a black net, you're not really, it's not going to take away from seeing the trees that are already there. I don't understand why we wouldn't have this there.
So you're not interested in talking with the...
I didn't say that. I didn't say that. I don't understand why we wouldn't utilize the place where the softball is.
No, I, I heard you. I'm just asking, would you, would you talk to them and see that?
I was wondering, actually, yes.
How about just bring it to a vote, get from there?
Well, it sounds like, I don't want to make a change of vote.
We need to bring it to a vote and let it ride what it is.
Make a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve this.
Do I make a motion to approve the sock, the barricades for 65 by 15 by 15 in the place where they have it is on this picture? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Earl seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
You don't want to talk to them first? To that, I don't know what you suggested, did you say?
To the, to the pickleball group that's developing that, that sports complex, that area next to the fire department.
I mean, I have kids that play, so I would support that, so I would be in favor.
Motion passed. Sorry, Gina. Uh, Mark Shers is not here. Ms. Connegata is here and we asked her to come to the meeting to talk about her tree, so I'd like to go ahead and get her up here if, and then we'll just talk about this tree stuff at that time. We'll move on to number eight. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Connegata and I'm here in regards to the trees around my residence, which is 1041 Main Street. And the trees are very important to me because that porch sometimes can kind of start to be raised in the afternoon, so it's going to be much worse without having trees. For the past two years, there's been a car show at the Brookfield United Baptist Church parking lot. And we, as part of the church, have been at the bank sales out there on the sidewalk, which is right by where you have your crosswalks. And for people to try to get across there, nobody stops. We had to get out there and physically wave them down to get them to stop. And that's happened for two years straight now. My trees have nothing to do with the crosswalk linking traffic, just doesn't stop at any of the crosswalks when they're linking. The papers say that two out of three have given approval, but no one has come to my residence to talk to me at all, except for you brought this up to me. So I am concerned and I just don't understand the crosswalks because they don't work. I mean, they work, but nobody stops. When that one bell got hit in front of my house, the vehicle went and hit him, but then another vehicle went right on through and didn't stop. So I don't understand what the crosswalks are doing, getting good at all. I'm sorry, I just, that's what I feel. Do you have any questions?
John?
Just one second, I came to your house, you weren't home. I did try to contact you.
Well, you can always call me, or leave me in there.
I should have.
So Ms. Gator, I think that what we'd like, at least, what I would like is for the crosswalks and the signals to actually stop traffic. And because they're there and they're new, relatively new, and they're hidden by those trees, I don't think a lot of people see them, therefore, not a lot of people stop. I think that more people stop at McDonald's and at Eighth Street than they do at your street, but I think it's a, it's a, it's an issue of learning that there's people that are crossing. And if they're able to see, if they're able to see the lights and the flashing, and the state is also planning on painting the roads more before the crosswalk to alert drivers that there's a crosswalk coming out, you're going to want to slow down. All those things, I think they're important because it, because when Brookfield took out all the streetlights, you can't get across Brook, uh, Main Street safely. And that, this is what the idea was, is to try to make some places where you could cross safely, but we just have to train our drivers that it's, you have to stop. And so it's, I just think it's going to take time for all the community to learn to look out for those crosswalks.
I understand that. And like I said, for two years down by the Brookfield Baptist Church, there's no trees and they still don't stop. You have to get out there and physically wave your arms to get people across the street. And that's my concern. I don't know if you could, you know, when you go up to the school and they put these bumper things in the road, you've seen those, and it waves you up, whether maybe that would help, I don't know. And I don't know who put those in, whether the state did or the school or who did that.
We can ask the state about that unless, why, do you know what the rules are in terms of putting bumpers on Main Street? It'd be the state. We'd have to ask the state. I'm sure there's...
Because if anything, if people were waiting up...
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe temporary bumpers because we would be able to clog over in the winter. But that's an idea, thank you.
Well, I don't think that matters because they, they have, they're going to the schools when they have a cloud there too, so I don't know. Just my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, the, this thing mentioned something in there. You noticed that they were going to put alligator teeth or something on there. Is that the rumble strips or whatever that they're talking about?
I think those were painted. It's, it's like painted on, on the concrete, so it's just paint, it's a little bit of modding.
They look like being stashed.
I was just wondering, I, I've noticed that they put like all rumble strips. I don't know what they are exactly. When you, you hit them over one-on-one, they make a lot of noise. It's kind of a worship. I don't know if something like that could be put on Main Street.
That's, that's what I'm talking about.
We'll, we'll, I think, we'll see. That's, again, good idea. I didn't know you could actually do that, so we'll, we'll ask about that. Thanks, Connie.
Thanks for listening to me.
So, being, um, so one of the things that we have on our list number nine is tree removal quotes to, to, to cut down trees. Now that we've talked to Ms. Gator, does anyone want to discuss the state plan and or the state suggestion to cut down these six, six different trees?
Connie, I'm, I'm sorry if we have to cut down trees, but I really am. I have trees that shade my porch. I love my trees. I wouldn't be upset if somebody wanted to cut my trees. But I, from my porch, I can see families trying to cross there. A lot of people try to cross there because they go to the gas station, get some trees or they go there. And I fear for them every time I see them there. I mean, and I've traveled that park and you can't see them much. You just can't.
Is there a reason why they can't put a stoplight there?
That's a state thing.
I doubt they put one because they took them all down at one point. I mean, I don't think they redo something they took down, but...
No, I'll be very unhappy without my trees, but I've been here to tell you what my opinion is, so that's, that's it. Thank you for listening to me.
Thanks, Connie. So we got two quotes to take down the six trees.
Are there three trees for me?
Yes, ma'am, there's three for you.
The one is just a, it's a little palm tree.
There's also one on the other side of that, of your sidewalk with your neighbor. So your neighbor's tree also is four. And then there's one on Debbie Burkhart's side. And then there's the one at that Brookfield Butcher.
I guess I don't have the right ones then. Why is there one on her side?
Because it's also blocking the, the view. And the one of the...
So we need to know exactly which trees you're taking out.
The three in the front. For, your property would be the three right in front. And then one on your neighbor to the right, and then one across the street, and then one at Brookfield Butcher. So six.
Bridgette, I think I have an extra copy of that attached to those quotes. That's great if she wanted to look at it.
Oh, yeah, sure.
When you take those down, do you take these stubs out too?
Sure. Remove stem, remove stem, yeah.
And the people who show posts, you know, this is removed stuff, which they'll just rub it down. I think it says like eight, eight inches over the, over by the back.
So you put the grass back so it can be done?
Correct.
Well, I might tap that in writing too. Whenever you do this, I hate to lose my trees, but I guess we've got pockets of that.
So I need to agree with Connie on that. Uh, I just, I just see where people buy and buy the flashing lights. I mean, I looked at a police report from last, we had zero speeding tickets. And I, I would think that would be more effective than, you know, just slow people down because people come over that hill and it's the same way to Southend Town. I mean, it's supposed to be, go down the 30 mile mark. It doesn't hit there. And it's semi, more semi all the time. And, and I'm not for sure that, you know, the yellow light does, you know, a lot of things, but that's...
Is it a violation of law to go through the crosswalk with the light on? Is that like a ticket that we could give out to people? Like we could park at least five or something, maybe start taking people?
I believe that needs to be addressed first.
Okay, so yeah, it would be, maybe somebody, maybe Dan, you can ask the police department to, to pay more attention to that at certain areas, certain times of the day, would you?
I would.
You'll, you'll talk to them?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Take you some tickets, maybe that'll help. Or at least a car sitting there might help. Okay, so we do have two quotes. One is from Smith's Tree Service, that's from our boys. Go on. Any preference?
Go on, just give us a break.
You know, Hattler's?
Yeah.
No, no. He said he didn't have two, Bridgette.
You know what they are?
I don't think so.
You know what they are? Four hundred and thirty thousand. Fifty. And...
Twenty-nine.
He has one that's two point nine.
I'm still going.
Can you, what, in the north side?
What?
For what's on? For what's on? Anybody want any motion on these two quotes?
I'd make a motion when we did the four hundred.
Is there a second?
Second.
All bigger? All those, what you care, Goys is the one.
So this isn't going to happen until we get the other?
But first we have to get the permit, right? And we don't have that yet.
I don't have the permit yet. I'm waiting on bond information. I have, if our person don't allow, I'll get the bond information. And once I submit that, it should be good to go.
Okay.
I have a question. I didn't hear what the two quotes were.
Oh, sorry. We've got Smith's Tree Service for twenty-nine hundred, and we have Goys for three thousand fifty.
Well, you might think you're going to spend three thousand dollars to cut down six trees, which you could probably give somebody a different amount. And cutting down trees is not going to solve the problem because I agree with Dan, people do not stop. They're not going to see it. Doesn't matter if they do see the ones that they can see, they don't stop. Now, I don't know if in the past year, two years, or however, how many people we had run over on Main Street trying to cross the street. We crossed one.
One.
We had people crossing the street for a hundred years and never had this, had a need for this. And once you, once you cut down the trees, they're gone. It's going to take twenty, thirty, forty years for them to grow back, if you want it to grow back. So you have to look at what you're going to lose as opposed to what you're going to gain, which I think is very crucial.
Thank you, Mr. Shane.
Is there signs on Main Street saying to yield to the lights when they're flashing?
Yes, I want to be nervous, but in this plan, they talk about removing the pedestrian signs, the smaller pedestrian signs, and putting the additional yield only signs, yield only, replace the existing yield sign with these state signs that says state law yield to pedestrians. So they're going to have those at each one of the stops on both sides. And that they're going to change the fire, fire truck sign as well, add one of those signs. And then replace the yield signs at these locations as well. So these are the state, there's a special sign that's state approved for pedestrian walks. And then these little ducities, these little triangle type things where there's a "I'll give it to you" that'll try to alert people to stop. Does that answer your question? This is up here, kind of, I almost didn't see it. Okay, moving on to the eclipse map. So I guess we're supposed to indicate where we want to allow people to watch the eclipse?
We talked about at the eclipse meetings, having the town park and the golf course, eating place, we're going to have problems, whether we do it or not, we're going to have problems. People parking on the grass in April, it's probably going to be wet, it's probably going to tear up the fence. But I think people are going to be parking where they want to park, and there's nothing we can do about it. But we need to have a place at the police for people to go view it. And I think the town park is a good place to go view it. The school, as I've understood, is blocked and not called their property and won't allow anybody on it. The police has said they're going to be too busy to enforce it. So if we would say no to our property, it wouldn't be able to enforce it. They're expecting somewhere between fifty thousand to a hundred thousand people around here on the eclipse there.
So do you have any suggestions on where we should tell the team to indicate places to watch the eclipse? Because I think that's what they're looking for.
That's what it's saying, the town park and the golf course. And again, I don't know if we want them on the golf course, but I don't know if we have a choice. I don't know if we just get ahead of it and try to control as much as anybody out of them, or lose total control and say, don't do it, watch them go in. I don't.
I don't think the towners are going to remember that the golf course belongs to the town, so maybe they would respect it because they think it's private property, could be. But I'm okay with, you know, ripping off some areas to say eclipse viewing area or something like that. I mean, that's, it sounds legit to me. I don't know what everybody else feels.
I don't know if it's possible, rather than if you can maybe rent carts that day, they would have dragged out on the course of view while they're at the paper car and drive out there. So I don't know how that works.
Yeah. Sure, that's something we can flush out this time, get closer. I think for now, we just want to indicate where we want little stars or something that says eclipse viewing area to here. I think that's going to be distributed in our local areas, so just let it be a little ago.
Is there any, would there be, any money available? And I'll throw out an obvious, but I don't know if they participate outside of town to rent a field or just, you know, pretty much keep a lot of the content, you know?
Well, I think if you want to go to the eclipse meeting, you definitely should because that's a great suggestion for that group of people because there's people from all over our county that are involved with it. But again, I just think the business that we have is just to tell them which places on the map to mark as more use. Our mission right now is pretty small. I mean, because this eclipse thing is going to, like I said, you should go to the meetings because the planning that's being done there and the volunteer service is amazing.
My concern about the golf course is if you just witness the tractor, you know, people go over there anywhere, and they will tear up the golf course so badly, you know, if it's wet at all, because you can't control it. Our police say they're going to be too busy. But, you know, how do you get a park? I mean, they had a whole parking service over there to halfway control. You know, and then they had, you know, they had the town or the county transportation taken over in certain locations. But it will just be a free struggle in my opinion if you let the golf course.
I do have reservations about the golf course for the same reason. I think, sorry Rocky, but there's going to be less destruction in the town park potential destruction in the golf course. I think the golf course could, that's a bunch of money.
Ron, do you have any input on this? I mean, at this point, we haven't established where.
Right.
If there is any, but, you know, just, again, this is just to put a star on the map.
All right, but the biggest thing at the golf course is we have three Berry Barnes parking lots. And I've already had several people called to get tee times for that particular day so they can be there. They get my system, I can't go away in April, so I have to pull them off. But I've had more than, I have a dozen to a dozen calls about that particular day. They just want to come up, play golf, and be there or maybe the eclipse happens. Because we sit up on the hill. Personally, it just all depends on the weather.
Right, yeah, but we got to play.
If it's not raining, our ground is harder rock. It's like a hard rock. But if it rains, then we get, then you can get some damage. But it's hard to tell this far out. I really don't know how that.
So are we thinking of damage because people are going to drive golf carts on the grass? People are going to drive cars on the grass?
Yeah, they're going to park their cars wherever they can get a view.
Okay. And we can't limit them just to our parking lots?
Yeah. Well, no, I can write it off. I can buy the stuff to write that off for that day. We need those anyway. But, you know, but yeah.
You just stop people from coming in once there's too many, what's, what's acceptable?
Right, right. And we can charge, we can charge five dollars a car.
Is that okay?
You have a wire?
We could do more than that.
But yeah, I just, I think it's too far out, but it is something that is being requested. So I just don't know how, how we feel about it. I just know that our ground is fine and the cars won't hurt it unless they go in areas where they don't belong.
That would take control management.
Right, and we would just have to take control of that, so.
Well, do you have anything else?
The town park, a lot of people buy itself the town park, and why not utilize the county park?
Well, that's another.
The county. Yeah, I'm sure they probably will open up, but it might take a lot of stress from the golf course.
I mean, I would hate to not put the golf course on there, but it's up to the council.
Are they here marking the Eighth Street parking lot and the school parking lot as well, or are we just looking at locations, big locations, I guess?
I think they want bigger locations. I think any parking lot is going to be utilized. And I hope that people in town, like Speedway, can sell off parking in their yards. I think they can make a little bit of money that way.
So can I get a motion for putting the, our two, I guess, big locations on the map or putting any location in Brookfield on the map before they print this out?
I'm okay with the town park.
So the motion?
Can you, yeah. You'll make a motion. Put the town parks.
Can you please turn that on and speak into it? Thank you.
I'd make a motion that we use the town park for our eclipse parking.
And that's it, just the town park? Daniel, a motion to only put the town park on this map that's going to be distributed for Franklin County. Is there a second?
There's a second.
John, second, all bigger? All closed? What you care, so that'll just be the town park? So at least that means we don't tell people that they can't come to the golf course and watch it unless they're blocking.
Well, yeah, if you want to set up something where we can make some money, it just won't be on the map.
Next issue is the S E I ready grant. So the proposals were due for the sewer line at Brookfield Road last Friday, and we, the town of Brookfield, received six different proposals. Those six are Brackney Incorporated from Brookfield. Number two is, this is in their particular order, Earth Tech Cleaning Water Solutions out of Batesville. G R D Engineering out of Kellington, Kentucky. Reynolds Construction out of, I think out of Boilings, Indiana, I think. Okay. And then T W Consulting out of Indianapolis. Android Engineering also out of Indianapolis. So our official formal, our Q, wait, our, R F P Q, is going to have to meet and start going through all these proposals, which tends to set up those meetings for those other six numbers in the team.
Six.
Six plus ten is seven. So now that we're talking about that, Derek, we'll have some questions, I think, to talk about the S E I ready grant.
Just want to piggyback off of what I commented last time. Since then, I've spoken to a couple of grant writers that I know and people who all versed in grants. I want to preface this by saying they know nothing about this area, they know nothing about the project, they just know the grant agreement and what I presented. And they agreed with me and said that the conclusion that the matching funds at least must be provided in evidence as noted in the grant by the end of the grant period, August twenty twenty-six, or at the same time as the grant funds are procured. I mean, ratioed out. They all also said with it being a federal grant and even specified inside of the grant documents, that it will be audited and they need to figure out how matching funds are accounted for and tracked. This is very crucial. They're so, it might lead to a chicken or the egg type, it's depend on your own. I mean, the sewer first than matching funds, or the matching funds then the sewer. Then I also made the note of what the attorney had said about that they would have to sign the agreement to the two investors. And they said technically they did because there's letters in there with their signatures on it. So my question to you as a taxpayer and as a member of the V O T committee, what mechanisms are in place to protect the taxpayers on top of the hill and the taxpayers of the town? And what mechanisms are going to be put in place to make sure that these funds are correctly matched for the grant being procured from the investors, i.e. twelve million from D N G and twenty-four million from S M W? And if these matching funds for the grant are not procured by the fund date, and are required to be handed out to the federal government, who would that fall on?
So as the last time you asked these questions, we don't have, I mean, unless John does, have any answers to that. I would say that if you're asking a grant writer and grant questions, then the person that could answer that is Mary McCarthy, who is our grant administrator for this grant. She would, I think, be able to provide a lot of insight into the repercussions for this as she is a certified grant administrator for the state of Indiana. So, and she's responsible for this grant. So she would actually be the first person, I would say, to ask. Have you asked her?
I've talked to her just a couple of things. I haven't been doing this.
Well, if you can email me those questions, I can forward it to her and you so that you have her contact information, but she's going to be the one with literally all the knowledge to answer all those questions.
Getting along, I'm just saying, you guys are going to be the ones that make the ultimate decisions for everything. So, I mean, you guys should be the ones that actually ask those questions too, because you might want to know the answers to these. Because I've been told to go back to this grant agreement, and I continue to go back to it, I'm asking questions, and you don't know, you're the ones that are making the decisions.
Thank you. And if Mary doesn't have an answer, I'm sure she'll reach out to I D D C, who administer these funds, who I'm sure have leaders on staff that can help answer these questions as well.
Is it possible to return from this meeting? This Mary, I don't know. It should be on the agenda if people have questions or maybe bring us all up to speed.
I can give you her contact information when you can ask her to come if you'd like. But yeah, I mean, she's very appreciative, she's working for this grant, so.
Thank you. Just any more, you'd be a tax person. Thank you.
Next is new business, is the town manager discussion. So at our, what we've done so far with this ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one is we did read it for the first time. That was a month ago, and then at our last meeting, we failed to do a second reading because no one made a motion. And so we're back again with four people. And I didn't want to put this, I did not want to take a vote because I don't want to have Gina constantly be voting. I wanted to see if maybe we could come up with some kind of compromise between the two. Well, I guess let me ask Earl first. Earl, how do you feel about the town manager pending this ordinance? Sorry, everyone else is making it. Anyways, have your opinions changed at all?
I read over.
Therefore, there it is, it's a four, sorry.
I read over this before the meeting. I'm for it. I would be for it.
Okay, so that is still two, two. Is there? We just didn't find anything.
Well, if I could make a suggestion, I know at the last meeting, there was a discussion about a liaison between department heads and the town council. What if, I mean, if you two are in favor and you two are opposed, what if one of you and one of you sat down and went through the ordinance and said, hey, I like this, I don't like that, and see if you can come up with something that works?
My decision is I'm against another layer of getting. I, I just don't believe we need this layer, no matter what the, the job description says. I think it's a chance to save taxpayers' money. That's how I believe.
I didn't say I had a good suggestion.
No, I, I'm concerned that Gina's caught in the middle of, I mean, is that any of the legal?
Yeah.
Tag her.
Yeah, the, the, the clerk treasurer is the next official member of the town council and goes in the case of the town. By statute.
So in preparation of this discussion, I went ahead and created, um, a paper, twelve or so different duties, um, that, um, that Jess did as a special projects officer, whether she was, whether it was in her duty description or not. And, um, I wrote these down to try to see if we could, well, I tried to convince, I tried to list a bunch of tasks so that these guys would be convinced that we actually need a person to manage this. Clearly I failed because they didn't change their view. Um, but what we need to do, since today is our first day without Jess, is at the very least come up with how this town is going to function without her as the, as the belly button for all of these different projects. Because I personally do not think, although Gina is amazing, um, but her job description is statutorily defined. And although she will answer the phone and she will answer questions that have nothing to do with the clerk treasurer, I don't think it's right that she has to, because this council refuses to put someone in that position that, that has been there for, I'm thinking, at least ten years. Um, all of a sudden take that, take that, um, cohesiveness away from, uh, the employee functioning and us functioning. Um, I, I don't think it's right that Gina would, would fall into that category. I think that pulling someone out of that position is going to force her to do things, take her time away from her actual statutory job, which is clerk treasurer, not organizer of projects or, you know, following up on the department head to get a quote or all these things listed here. I just don't think it's right.
Uh, I answered your paper and put it down, I thought step by step, and it's my fault for not bringing it. Uh, but Gina, I don't think was mentioned once on any duties, uh, that I had other people mention for the duties. And I think it could work, at least in the interim, while you try to convince of Gina to go to your place.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Uh, we had a projects manager, correct?
It had.
And that position's gone away. We want to hire a town manager. Before the projects manager, who handled all that stuff that she supposedly did? Who handled all that stuff for years?
Tim.
No, 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 let's not say that. Tim handled the pool.
No.
Tim handled the pool and Jess handled the pool, so that they share.
She said for Jess.
I know that. Can, can I finish? Tim did not handle the golf course. Tim did not handle the preservation mainstream grant, nor did he handle any of the health project grants, nor did he handle the historic preservation committee, um, nor did he, what, nor was he in our various community groups that Jess is a member of, um, nor did he, well, he's still the manager of that website.
Tim did the town administration responsibilities that were before him at that time. And if these other responsibilities had come up, then Tim would have done those also.
He asked a question and I wanted to make sure we gave a clear answer.
Well, I just wanted to give another answer.
So I'm just wondering, why, why do we need to hire somebody that, you know, hire under fifty-five thousand dollars a year to do something that has been done in the past by people who are already getting paid by the town? Now, granted Gina's the clerk treasurer, she shouldn't be doing all this stuff. But I understand that Tim isn't able, I don't know if he's willing, but just to, just to make up a new position to say we've got one, I don't, I don't see the advantage.
Tim's the utility supervisor. His responsibilities include the sewer and the water plant, and that is it.
I understand. Ron Rooney's manager of the golf course, he's responsible for that.
Right.
So what is out there that we need to make somebody identify how long you're due?
I, I just found a line.
Is there a bunch involved with all of that?
Yes.
Really is.
What we did in the past?
These are brand new to the past two years. All these, these things that I just rattled off is, is everything that the town is doing. So one of the things that Jess helped us do is start to dabble in the economic development and revitalization of the town by assisting with all these projects that, that Curtis and his council were able to get. But in order to manage all those projects, you need a full-time person, in my opinion, to help do that, to help coordinate with the engineers and the construction and business owners and quotes and, um, S N R P C and O C R, mainstream. Um, it takes a lot of coordination with all those entities to make these projects move forward. And that's what this person would be doing. In addition, um, one of the things from the hostile work environment investigation that we spent twenty-four thousand dollars on was the recommendation from a lawyer to establish a very clear organization of our town. And, um, he said that establishing those responsibilities and authorities is very important to any organization. I'm sure that anybody's been familiar with. Um, you don't have, um, four or five departments that are just out there floating with no one responsible for them. Usually there's one person in charge of it that held direct.
Well, you did worry responsible for that.
Yeah, but there's, unfortunately, there's five of us. So not one of us can tell any department head anything. I, I witnessed it myself in my own, in my own struggle to be an effective council member when I asked a department head to do something. They don't do it. They say that council is my boss, not you. So if we have department heads with that type of response to a reasonable, not, not, let me finish, to a reasonable request by a council member, then what is our, what is our recourse at one council member to do to that one department head? We don't, we don't have one.
Then if we all get together and we come to a consensus.
Well, that, that, sure.
If you've got somebody to tell you that, then you need five.
Well, we would have consensus, but then we would have to meet in serial executive sessions because we cannot discuss personnel issues unless we're in an executive session. It's, it's, we could do it, but it would be very cumbersome. In fact, that executive session is once a week because it's daily operations that this type of thing comes up.
I don't think there's that many day-to-day operation issues come up. Make it sound like it's going to be a daily struggle. I do not think so. We have competent department heads take care of most everything that goes on in this town. This is not New York City with a bunch of migrants coming in. It's Rockville, Indiana.
I'm glad you brought that up because I would, I would like to schedule an executive session.
For what?
For performance, for employee performance issues.
Who do you ask for? It's not a second surgery.
Yes, it is.
No, it isn't.
Yes, it is. Andy, can we schedule an executive session to talk about employee, yes?
How, who are we evaluating?
I would like to discuss that in an executive session.
You, you've got to tell me who we're evaluating before, before we have to, or you're just pulling out something and do something else, and I'm not going to be a part of that.
Well, we should look at figuring something out and doing something else. I would like to have a meeting about employee job performance, which we can have. And that's where we discuss personnel issues that we don't discuss in public.
But what people may be? What, what do you?
I'm not going to discuss it in public. It's personnel issues.
Are you going to discuss where your department heads are doing or not doing the job individually?
That, that's one issue that can't be discussed, yes.
What other issue can we discuss?
Other job performance. I don't know.
That's a good.
Any other job performance issues.
There are, and you just want to create a position. That's it?
No, this is not to create positions, to provide information that other council members don't have, that I would like to provide to you in an executive session.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'll talk this. Uh, who, who did Jessica report what she did? And again, I, this was not a confirmed, it was a, I've been on the board for a month on the new guy. But in my five years here, I've gotten three fourths of comments from him, and I am a board member. One was, can I set up a cut case stand and roses work with parking lot? One is, I'm resigning from my position. And the other one is, can senior class build a float and our son go there? Nothing about all these things she's working on. So I'm just wondering, who did she tell all this to? And why didn't, that, that's part of my not supporting this is.
The reason you don't know is.
I'm sneaking. The reason that I'm not supporting this is I don't know what she did.
Did you get anywhere with this?
I mean, I can tell you what I did, Dana. It sounds like I'm busy.
So either you got the information or you didn't. I guess so too.
I don't know of any of that. I've never seen her at any meeting, which I've been to do, or any correspondence with me where she reported in anything.
Dan, this council, before you came on, decided that requiring monthly reports from our department heads was busy work. And so they did not, she did not report anything because this council told her she didn't have to. So the reason why, so the reason I know that all these things happen is because I spoke with her face to face.
I'd like to make a motion and we go back to having the department heads report monthly to the downers. So.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. No reporting allowed to. Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
So my next, um, so what I would like to do is schedule an executive session that I think might help at least with number ten. All in favor? I don't think we need to go on this. Um, when is anybody available for an executive session? Andy? Are you available sometime next week, maybe, for an executive session?
Right, we'll be out of town on the seventh through the fourteenth, get off tomorrow.
Okay. Um, maybe.
I'm on vacation Thursday, come up to.
I'm having my ear replaced next Thursday. I can't operate here.
I love to take.
Yeah, they always.
So do you want to, so obviously the executive session I'll be scheduling. Um, so do you want to go through all these things and divvy up all the responsibilities?
If you want to do it now, if you want to call a special meeting so everybody can look at what I have, that's fine for me.
You email this to everybody, so hopefully they're ready.
Maybe they have, maybe they haven't.
We can't have special meeting because everybody's gone until our next meeting. Like between now and our next meeting, there's, there's no time.
So we won't have a forum again on the next meeting regularly?
I'm leaving after the meeting.
Okay. So the sixteen?
Sixteen, I'm good.
You're here or you're getting surgery? You're going to have surgery.
Cool.
I'll be, I'll be back to talk to Sophie.
Earl will be here. So.
I mean, I can, I can try to get you. It's just mobile on me.
So we might have to delay that meeting. That's fine. Just let us know, because it'll just be, I guess it'll just be a three days. Um, but we can't schedule, we might as well just delay the special meeting or executive meeting until our next meeting anyway, since everyone's going to be gone. So, um, I mean, do you, does anybody want to talk about how to do all these different tasks today for implementation tomorrow? Or do you just want to just let it go until the next third, fourteen weeks? Just let it go? Just don't, don't move any of these projects forward until these, let them? Nobody?
Say we finish off the rest of the agenda and come back to it.
Okay. Next is number three, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, budget adoption twenty twenty-four.
So I have a warrant in mind. I have orders, um, based off of what was approved from last meeting, um, public hearing. So when you look at the front of the ordinance, none of the, none of the regulations or anything like that have changed. That's all the same. That's what we were presenting with earlier. Um, what did change, the only adopted budgets that changed were the general and the N B H. Um, we had, you know, increased those budgets, inflated them to make those last minute decisions. Um, and those decisions that were included, um, actually, public safety as well. We did sixty-five thousand for public safety supplies, which was to be determined. Um, we did the salary increase, so three percent flat over the full-time employees. Um, we included replacing the deck in general for the golf course. And then we included the garage lift in N B H and the root of the soft barn. Um, I did increase that garage lift to twenty-five thousand since we took away the soft barn just to give us a little bit more room. So, um, and then the other home mortgage loans on the bottom just haven't changed either. So tonight I'm just asking council to approve and adopt the budget as you've had a great prompt before. Um, if you do, uh, we're just on the back of your original. It'll just check I or A, verb stain, and then your signature's in the right. Did you guys have any questions for me on this?
I just wanted to show the local intent that is taking out of the cashiers' guards. Or is that taking out of the cashiers' guards at all, that budget, two forty-three, or is that what, is that?
So that was, I think that was what, um, Carla had.
As our revenue?
Yeah, it was a little bit more actually, I think, than what we, so we're a little bit.
Okay, thank you. I move to approve the budget as Gina explained from our last team's.
So.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Uh, next is, um, sorry, department, department head of ordinance. That's you, um, twenty twenty-four, department head of ordinance.
According to Beau McKenna, attorneys at law, back in the summer, we've had this meetings with the attorneys going on. They said time to appoint the department head would be September, October. It did not happen in September. It is now October, so I was questioned if we have appointments tonight.
I think we wait till December once usual, Dan.
I think we can wait till January once usual, Dan, at the first year, at our first organization.
Yeah.
So even though the attorneys said that now is the prime time to do it, so they can, if you're not replacing someone, it's fine. But if someone's going to be replaced, they need a heads up, be able to go job seat for themselves.
Can I just throw my two cents? This is something I will not be a tiebreaker on because I feel like I do not, I'm not in charge of department heads. To be honest, procedural items I'm fine with, but when I work with people and I don't feel like I have the authority to. So if there's disagreements, I don't want to be a tiebreaker for this closure.
Any for the items?
Please.
Fine.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think you have to be a tiebreaker.
So, um, do you want to, I mean, do you want to make a motion at that?
Nobody wants to do it. Just throw it out.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to do it first, maybe, January, or January first.
I don't think we need a motion, but that's fine. Um, next is frisbee golf. So the first, so we are talking about frisbee golf tonight because we got another complaint about flying frisbee missed by from someone who says that flying frisbee missed hitting me by less than twenty-four inches. I didn't know why the frisbee was coming my way. I saw two men in the distance who had obviously launched the disc. I had no idea where the target was. So this goes on to complain about the golf course. Um, and in addition, we had one, that was just September twenty-fifth. And then this one was back in April that we really didn't take any action on. Um, same, same thing. Um, no T signs, we currently T pads. I've been playing this golf for twenty years. At some point, someone's going to get hit with a disc. This, these discs have killed people, hit in the head. Okay, goes on. Um, I just thought we should bring this to the board's attention um, to see if anybody wanted to take any action or make any changes or just take it out of consideration when we want.
As a user of the park, I enjoy seeing the young people down there playing frisbee golf, and I've not had any major interactions with them. But I think it's in the wrong place. I think it's too congested. And I think that whoever wants to be in charge of it should go talk to the county commissioners. There's plenty of space at the county park and I talked to them and they're okay with it being over there. So I think that's the good place for it. I think the town park is the wrong place for it.
I agree. I was against it when they first implicated it due to safety concerns, but nobody took the safety into consideration then.
Do you want a motion?
Dan, do you want to say anything?
Is there any way to look at the holes affected? Because some are safe and there are, but yeah, some are very dangerous. I think it mentioned, you know, the terminal gentleman that's done it for twenty years, several left ago, he had an accident to people or people's lives. To get to the target. So I don't know if it's worth our while to look into that to say, okay, you know, maybe you could come on and.
There's, there's eighteen holes.
To look at, and, and you did the layout, didn't you?
Um, I'm sorry, I don't remember his name. Uh, Adam?
Adam O'Leary. O'Leary?
Uh, the person that's played golf before, we didn't, I don't think they got the, it wasn't done by any of their, one of the things that this guy said here in this complaint is that I guess Conjo had to redo theirs. I didn't, um, for safety reasons, they had to redo it. And he said, you know, we don't want you to fall into the same category, but it sounds like we would have to, but.
Maybe since we've been notified basically formally, um, that it is a hazard, possible hazard, are we liable if we don't do something?
Should be.
I mean, if there were something to happen there, even if we never would have notified, the town would be named, it's just the town park. But this, these emails would certainly, they're certainly public records. It can be used to show that the town has put on notice and that the town would be doing, and that could create problems.
So one of the suggestions was maybe we put up a sign that says, beware, you might be hit by a golf, disc golf, I don't know. I mean, you know, as a, I mean, we could put something there now, just, you know, as a temporary.
Why don't I do like Johnson, talk to the commissioner, have him meet to the county park where the county park's ten times bigger than the town park.
Well, who would do that? Do you own that?
Johnson does that a lot, I do.
Would, would you be able to remove things that were happening?
Yeah. Have their just gone where they did and removed it.
Do you have a place to store them?
Let me find a place.
I'm making a motion to remove.
John made a motion to remove the disc golf, eighteen hole. Course in the town park. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay. Uh, motion passed. Um, four to zero. Rocky, can you start to take the disc off that?
Yes.
Next is the Keystone Mill.
So you have a quote in front of you. Um, Keystone or Voice Systems is the software that we use for our utility payroll and funding program. Um, obviously, we've had a, an increase over the years, but the biggest increase being the last two, um, it's a little over ninety percent. Um, I'm sure there's other vendors that I could seek out, but I'm pretty doubtful. So I'm asking council to approve our request to renew the software.
And this is for a total of twelve thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for the yearly subscription or yearly renewal.
License renewal.
Thank you.
So a lot of the utility, the key billing, the payroll, fund and device, that's all split between the funds because it's water, sewer, general. Um, so they're all split between these three parts.
Uh, great. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'm making a motion to approve.
John made a motion to approve the voice system maintenance contract for twelve thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. Is there a second?
I second.
Earl seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. Do I do this over channel? Do I do this over channel?
Um, I just have a normal slide yet.
Did you guys do the signals or did you?
Yeah. I thought you were passing.
No, it's just me. Um, next is Water Works employee. Ten?
Oh, yes, I think I've sent out literature. I'd like to recommend that Philip Clum for Water was supporting. Uh, he has, um, background in heavy equipment operation, excavator, uh, backhoe, so I think he would be very valuable to the town. I mean, he'd be used at different departments for a number of different things, so. He'd be a good, good asset to the town.
And where can he start?
Um, I'll simply this week.
Is there a motion to approve?
I did read that he asked to fulfill the certain K D three within a year, right?
Yes, he is aware of that, that he has to fulfill that. And he also understands that he has to undergo a criminal background check and a drug test also.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to approve Philip.
Earl made a motion to approve Philip Clum for the water department. Is there a second?
Second.
John seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carry. Next is, next is the street department employee that will be not be named. Uh, but the council does have the name. Uh, but the person has not given notice. So if we do opt to hire the person, they'll give their notice and then to their current employer. So do you want to say anything generally about the person?
He needs, needs our qualification. We're actually looking for that state department inquiry. Not spot open, which is what we do now, is what he does, so. A little bit more security.
That's great. And is he local?
Yes. Make a motion to hire.
John made a motion to hire the unnamed person who will be named at the next meeting. I'm so sorry. We just don't want to mess it up with the names of the board. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed?
I have to, I don't know who it is.
Oh. I'm sorry. Do you have a piece of paper? I have one in my packet. Oh, great. Sorry. One moment, please. Okay, sorry. All in favor? All in favor? All opposed? Zero, four to zero. Motion passed. So you'll let us know for the next meeting then, I'll answer. Thank you. Okay. Uh, true removal. Okay, next is the N dot invoice.
So our community crossings grant called from twenty twenty-two. Um, the payment was completed. Uh, we got our invoice from Row and it was less than the bid amount. Um, so we have some state funds that need to be returned. So, um, I got on the back, close out sheet, I did print it out and it shows what the cost was, um, what the purchase order the state sent was based on the bid amount, which was our seventy-five percent. Um, and then the total of the invoice and then what actually needs to be returned. So I just need approval to return those funds.
And this is returning forty thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-six cents the original amount. We were ordered a hundred ninety-eight thousand three hundred thirty-five, but then I ended up only paying.
Well, the total for Row is one seventy-one, three hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Thank you.
So there's seventy-five percent. It was a hundred twenty-eight thousand five hundred two, a hundred twenty-nine cents. And then our, our portion was forty-two thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars.
Thank you. So we're just returning this and we just need an approval.
I made a motion to put words.
John made a motion to approve the return of forty thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-six cents to N lab for twenty twenty-two C C M G award. Is there a second?
Second.
Earl seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carry. Okay, did that. Um, oh. Uh, so the next thing that is not on the agenda, I'm so sorry. Um, but we got a very late, um, professional services agreement that we were trying to. So this is another, um, one of those agreements where, uh, we, I think what we want, would like to do is, or Gina said, don't sign it, um, until, she would like to have a no, no more than dollar amount on this. I don't know if you guys do that. But this is kind of one of those book and ended agreements with an engineer that they can do projects for us and just bill it, and then once the money runs out, they have to come back and say, hey, we need some more money. Um, the reason why I asked for this and try it because we have the parking lot and the town park that has to be engineered before we can submit it. Um, I'd like to look at Maridoff Park just to make sure we're straight on that. It shouldn't take very long. Um, and then I wanted to look at the police department building to find out how much, um, an idea of how much to renovate that. And then I also asked them to look at Franklin Seventh, uh, that drainage problem that we have. So, um, there's just a few projects, and so Alan suggested just do a professional services agreement. And Gina said, let's, um, put it no more than a dollar amount, and Andy said it's good to go. So that's why I want to just kind of get this moving because again, um, we have to submit this. Our, the parking lot packet by January, and I just feel like we are behind a curve. Uh, and this will help us at least get that project going started. So.
Will you put it into that figure?
So Gina suggested.
I, I, I don't care. It's up to council to decide. I just go with other on-call contracts that we have. They had enough to exceed. And then once that billing was decreased, I have to come back and ask for an addendum.
Do you have a suggestion?
Do you need, I'm happy. I'll wait and try after those that you don't want me back there. Um, I really don't have a suggestion for you in terms of, uh, a dollar limit. Uh, maybe we can put a million in there. I'm just kidding. Um, I don't know how much these projects are going to end up, so I can't give you an estimate. Maybe I can give it to you in the next meeting.
I mean, either that or you just throw out a number. It'll be a start. Um, at least by the purposes, I know what, what we can maybe expect until we come around to an addendum and we'll know more what, if we have to do more, you know?
And, and then I just want to make sure, is this kind of where you would give us task orders? We would tell you what the project is and then you would give us a task order with a dollar amount?
Right, right. We would, um, you would tell us the project and, and maybe a laundry list divided that you want. Then we'd come back to you with an approximate estimate for engineering and then go from there. So we would, Jason, you won't tell us when you job a billion or surprise. We try to work back and forth so that you can narrow down uh, and know what the cost is going to be upfront for the work.
Thank you. Um, just making sure because I'm aware of this. Um, I believe that we approved this with a, uh, no, no more than fifteen thousand uh, for this first one, and then if you need more, whatever, you'll come back.
Yeah, I'm, I'll be here every meeting so we can, uh, you know, get things rolling. Cause you, you all, you all want to, I just broke your, um, you all want to get things moving, so I'll be here so we can keep on communicating so there's no lags in the decisions.
That is right.
Okay.
Um, I, I made a question. Is there a second?
Second.
John seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carry. Forwarded to zero, but how do I put that front of here about a hundred and fifteen thousand? Do I just write it in?
And then mention the addendum to, like, so that staff knows that.
I would just, I would send, I would just.
Send a different copy.
Send a different copy. What has been presented is not what was approved. What was approved is what has been presented with the addition of an occupancy of fifteen thousand dollars. So if you can get an updated copy, the county council's already heard it.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, okay, I think that's it. I'll just move on.
Good for all of that.
I thought we were going to talk about our stuff, but Nancy, does anyone have any comments from the public?
I'll go back to this.
I avoided the meeting late, so just wanted to see if John Newman was recognized at the meeting today. John Newman? John Newman? So I take that as a.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
I was late to the meeting, so I just wanted to make sure that no mention was made at the service that John Newman has provided for the town.
Uh, no.
Okay. So we'd like to make a public statement that John Newman passed away today. At three ten. And he has provided an enormous service to the town of Oakville through the years he's been here. He has put the town of Oakville on map with registering the storage town, workforce storage district in July nineteen seventy-five. This has allowed people to have another town of Oakville and the storage district to be able to receive qualified for tax credits for their historic homes and historic commercial units. And I've worked with him very closely and we are updating his original work that he did in nineteen seventy-five. Unfortunately, we did not see the time to approve that, we're expecting to do that in the next couple of months. I didn't want to take the time to recognize him properly.
Thank you, Nancy.
Get our few services to be decided.
I've worked with John when we've come to the library or I've worked at the library. And he has so much information and he taught me quite a bit about researching history questions. And it was an honor to know John.
Thank you, John. Are there any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the council or anybody else?
John, John helped, John wrote the history of the world field that was on our website. He has provided so much information over the years about the town. Just, just everything. Tremendous work to me in the past.
Thank you.
I really don't want to date myself, but me being a fan of history, he was probably the best teacher I've had in my school career. He, he was amazing, what he and how he shared it, so it's good to have.
Janice Wallstar came in. Do we want to discuss any of the duties from the paper that we kind of tabled from earlier in the, in the. Well, you want to discuss this?
Yeah, sure.
So the first issue was the preserving mainstream project and I think John put that the bridges are already involved in this. So you want me to take over all the responsibilities for the preserving mainstream?
Yeah.
I don't want to do that. I didn't sign up to be an employee of the town, I signed up to manage, make decisions about funding, maybe come up with some good ideas. I have no idea what this project is going to do once construction starts and how much coordination is going to take place. Obviously, I've never done this, just know I was going to have a sphere. Obviously, without anybody doing it, somebody's going to have to step up. And I will step up. And I will tell you again how much time I spent on this project so that you know exactly what I'm doing.
Thank you.
Because once you see how much is required, hopefully you'll be able to see that this, this is not identified by the council. The next one is the Department of Historic Preservation Commission. So Jess managed all of the certificate of appropriateness. She served as the liaison for residents and our volunteer members and any young landmarks, making sure that they have all the applications. She answered all the resident questions when they came in to ask for a permit, which is one of the things I agree to. Gina, I don't know what Gina's going to say to her.
Oh, dude.
And what do we do if we do a bad job? Or what does the council do if I do a bad job?
You can strike my hand and yell at me. Take your pen to the wall.
But my point is that there's no questions for this council to do anything to each other.
In my entire life, I've never done a job and said, I'm going to screw around and not do it. I just, I think most of the people at this table are the same way, we have good work ethic. I think our, all our employees are the same way, they have good work ethic.
While we're going through this, this, this.
Well, I just want to make a motion to reappoint him. Bert Berger's town manager, perfect.
What?
Dan, we can't appoint someone to a position that doesn't exist. That's what the ordinance was going to do is establish the position so that we could hire against it.
So we're really concerned about who's doing this stuff.
If you are for a town manager, then we can vote on the ordinance and pass the ordinance. Establish the position and then post it internally. Is that what you would rather do than go through all this?
Well, that would be done. I mean, I don't want to, I'm like you, I didn't come on board. And why do we always have to be the liaison to them? Why can't they send a liaison to us? And come to this meeting and report to us. But I, I mean, you know, it's, it's just one of those things that, you know, and I'm faithfully in God. It's just another layer we don't really need. We've got department heads who really don't, you know, have responsibility of managing their group necessarily. No offense. But, you know, I think the whole structure needs to be looked at and I don't think the, I don't think the answer is that even though that's my opinion.
So you do, you're the town manager position or you don't? I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm picking up what you're putting down.
Well, I don't agree with the town.
Please, thank you.
Not a little kid.
Can you please press your microphone, sorry?
I would agree to the town manager position as long as we don't split back being a project, special projects person.
Amen.
So.
I would encourage to manage, so one of the things the town manager would have to do is manage our projects.
Yes. But we don't need to hire a separate person to do, we don't need to hire a separate level to do that. The town manager should function that, that he does that.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'm not sure, okay.
You don't have, no longer have a special projects person no more, just a town position, the town manager would take.
Instead of the special projects, it would be the town manager and they would, they would be organized so that they are in charge of all the departments. So the departments would report to them is how this, is how the council decided in that chart a couple of meetings ago.
Right.
So then you're for establishing the town manager position?
Yeah, I mean, already down, yeah.
Okay, well, Earl, do you want to make a motion to have our second reading of the town of twenty twenty-three dash eleven? Ordinance establishing a position of town manager for the town of Oakville?
Yes, I made a motion to have a second reading.
Dan, Earl made a motion to approve the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven. Dan seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. So then, since this carried, then I was emailing out to all the department head.
Dan's names on there, that was from before he was on.
Oh.
Is it on?
I think he still signed. I think so, does he still sign even though?
I've never, I don't remember doing that, I just, if there's five spaces and three people sign, that's.
Okay, I wasn't sure. So since we've done this, I will send an email out to all the current department heads and alert them to this position. It's now, we're going to post it internally according to our employee handbook, that's what we do for positions that we leave. Right, Gina?
Well, I was going to say, do you have to do the job description first before they post, so they know when they're, sorry, I'm not trying to add another layer to the.
That's a good idea, Gina.
Want to make sure we're covered here.
I sent a draft out and I, we, because we could have get past this part, we never really discussed it. So I, so thank you, Gina, so I will come up with a, a duty description and email out to everyone. So is that something, Andy, that we have to agree upon at a meeting or can we do that by email or so we can send that out?
Are your job descriptions included in your employee handbook?
No, and that's, this is, plus this is a new position, so we don't have.
I mean, I think that the job description should be something that the council first, because the council orders the town manager, so.
Okay, so we'll do that at the next meeting then, okay, we'll do that. And I'll send it out so we can email back and forth what we agree or don't agree with, if that's all right with everybody. Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Anybody have anything else?
I'm going to talk to the commissioners Wednesday morning about the sidewalk and driveway to the county highway garage, if you ask it. And try to work out an agreement.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
Jay, would you like to come, go first?
I just want to mention John Heiss put on the meeting chat here on Zoom that he has the feasibility of moving to County Park checked. So no one needs to come to us to do so. I believe he's referring to the prison dog, is that correct? Or should I skim or?
Can you say what did he say?
He said that he has the feasibility of moving to County Park checked, no one needs to come to us to do so.
Okay.
Should I just verify what he's referring to?
Yes, yeah, we'll, if that would that.
Yeah, I would want to meet that they had and suggest that.
Oh, okay, great.
That's it, okay, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Um, just a, um, kind of talking about the prison dog. Did we not have some signs being ordered or something that we could stop to that or?
Yes.
I, I seem to me like I remember something about some signs being ordered.
Yeah, that was quite a while ago. He said that the signs were being made by, I think, Mark Reese and they were twelve by eighteen and they were already finished.
Oh, okay.
But that was, boy, that was about two, I'd say two months ago, I haven't heard from him since. So I'm not sure where they are or I don't know, Gina, if we paid for them or.
Part of that discussion, I believe, was they didn't meet the, according to Curtis, I don't know if you're quoting, but they didn't meet qualifications for signs, size, color, all those kinds of things. So I don't know if that made it.
That's cool. Building, they're talking about first, first big dog.
They don't want to do that in the, the town.
I don't remember that.
I've got to say.
If the county is going to be taking first, first big dog, putting it into use at their park, then there would be some fact of resolution we would need to, if you can change property with another government entity for no charge. But it does have to be kind of a resolution, so we can include the signs. If the signs are already made, we can do that.
John responded, yes, go.
Go.
Sorry.
Thanks, Gina. Okay, so maybe we'll figure out that at a later date, okay. And that's all, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
John made a motion to adjourn, so a second?
Second.
All seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried, meeting is adjourned.